I would like to call to order a public meeting by the mayor and board of trustees for the purpose of discussing proposed stormwater improvements which will benefit the Cambria subdivision and North Avenue corridor just west of Glenon Road. So with the public hearing being open, if there's anybody who would like to address this, born in public hearing, or I believe Andy has some information for us, maybe?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Most of you guys know, but I'm Andy Pufont with Christopher Burke Engineering. I brought tonight with me, I brought Doug Gotham, who is our landscape architect, and I brought Darren Olson, who is our hydraulics expert, and we are basically here to talk about the North Avenue flood alleviation project that the village is undertaking. The purpose of the meeting is basically essentially an open house. We are working diligently with Public Works staff, and I know letters were individually sent out to all of the residents within the, adjacent to the project site itself, inviting them and notifying of the meeting, encouraging them to come out and participate and provide some additional information and to hear about the project itself and give them an opportunity to talk about their flood experiences, as well as to find out schedules, the cost of the project, and exactly what's going to take place and how it's going to be impacted in their particular area. So tonight, we are basically just here to kind of provide some information, and then we're going to open it up to public to answer any questions or anything like that. We did bring some exhibits back here. We didn't want to run into the board meeting time, but we did want, in case we're going to be back there after, we'd run through a brief presentation to basically just give everybody an opportunity to come up, take a closer look at the exhibits themselves, give everybody an opportunity to ask any questions, and then we can answer them. So running through there, we are here for the open house for the flood, North Avenue flood alleviation project. The purpose of the meeting is to basically provide information regarding the flood control project that we're going to be undertaking in the Cambria subdivision, as well as the North Avenue corridor, in particular also the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza. We're also going to be seeking input from the public regarding the various project components that are included in the project, and then also basically giving everybody an opportunity to ask any questions and in order to get any questions answered itself. So we did provide a little diagram there, just any information that you guys have. You know, the village itself has been extremely informative and providing us information so that we can better, you know, provide a better design, that design, that information can be brought in, and we can incorporate that into our design in order to give better results and make sure the project functions exactly as anticipated. So the goal of the project itself, as we know, the Cambria subdivision, the North Avenue corridor there, as well as the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza, it's been a focal point for the community for 10 to 15 years now, as long as I've been involved with it. We've spent, the village has spent a lot of money doing roads in town. We just finished a million dollar water main and road rehabilitation project with the assistance of CDBG funds down there. So in 2008, we've done the James Court water main, as well as the roadway reconstruction. We've done Sydney Pearl, we've done street lighting to improve safety over there, as well as the, you know, for roadway lighting. So we've spent a lot of money. The village has done, you know, countless jobs down there trying to improve that particular area. And the next step is the flooding. As we know, that particular area is actually a low, a real low area within the community, and it's been hit hard by various flood events recently, ones that have been, I don't want to say uncharacteristic to the area, but they've been extremely large. And, you know, other communities have been impacted as well, but this particular area in Glendale Heights was also just kind of inundated and almost incapacitated for an extended period of time. The residents were kind of probably kept out of their houses, they were probably forced to throw away a lot of things. The businesses in the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza were forced to close, you know, limiting, you know, how much, you know, their sales, as well as, you know, that information coming back to the village. So basically, the goal of our particular project is actually to go ahead and reduce the depth and the frequency of the flooding in the commercial, the single-family, and the multifamily residential properties in the Cambria subdivision and the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza. Below the project goal there, you can see just photos, the one on the left there is James Court Pond, and you can see that's actually James Court right there. It's actually probably under about three to four inches of water, so it's actually over top the pond banks, and it's basically sitting over the top of the roadway. And then you've got the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza photo on the right, and that's with the police tape around it, basically just barring off the entrance there, just basically right after a flooding event, saying that, you know, no entrance into that particular area. So a little bit about, I'll invite Darren to kind of come up and talk about the project history a little bit itself, and kind of just give some background about the various flood events that took place in 2008 and 2010, and kind of talk about the, you know, those major events itself and how it impacted the community.
Thanks, Andy. My name is Darren Olson. I'm a water resources engineer, Christopher Burke Engineering, and I've been involved with this project since about 2008. Was aware at that time when the really severe flooding occurred in September 2008, we can all remember that. And again, this area was hit in July of 2010 as well. During that time, we were commissioned by the village to complete a drainage study of the area. We performed very detailed hydrologic and hydraulic modeling of James Court Pond and all the water coming to it and where that water goes. That study was completed in March of 2011, where we provided an analysis of current drainage conditions, flooding that occurs, and also seven proposed drainage alternatives to reduce the, both the depth and the frequency of flooding in the area. We worked with the village staff very closely after that and selected alternative four based on the cost of that project versus the benefits of that project, and that was completed right around January of 2012. And shortly thereafter, we made a application to FEMA for what's called the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Grant, and that specifically looks at the cost of a project versus the benefits and flood damage reduction, and if those benefits are greater than the cost and funding is available, that project can move forward. And this one was able to move forward through that grant application process. It's a very lengthy process dealing with FEMA, and in September 2014, after several back and forth negotiations and correspondence with FEMA, that project was approved, and currently now engineering is underway.
Darren, can you please just give the acronym FEMA and that it's a federal funding?
Correct. So FEMA is the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and the grant that we applied for is the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, or HMGP for short, and it is a federal grant. So some of the, as we were looking at the project and we're designing these different alternatives, some of the constraints that we had in this area, as Andy had indicated, this area is fairly unique in that it does have a large upstream drainage area to James Court Pond. If you were to drive by the pond, it's a triangular pond, it's fairly small in size, but there's over 200 acres of land north and upstream of there that has to drain through that pond. So an extremely large amount of water during these storm events is trying to move through James Court Pond and through that, the shopping center. There's just not enough flood storage to contain that water. There's limited storm sewer and inlet capacity out of James Court Pond and towards the downstream area going under North Avenue and further south of Menards. And this is an older area, and as these older areas were developed prior to modern stormwater management practices, they don't have safe overland flow routes. So nowadays, if the storm sewer capacity is exceeded, that water will safely travel overland to downstream areas, and this area does not have that, just because of the age of these particular developments. So we broke down our project into several components, really focusing on James Court Pond, on the storm sewer system in the Glendale Square Shopping Center, and then some downstream flood storage, and I'll talk about each one of these now. James Court Pond, we're going to be constructing a new outlet structure to get water out of James Court Pond quicker. So that'll include a new structure, some new storm sewer. We're also lowering the normal water level of the pond, and if we think of James Court Pond as a bathtub, we're lowering the bottom of the bathtub, so there is more storage that will be available in that pond at the start of a storm event. It'll also help get water out of the pond quicker. We'll be dredging the bottom of the pond, so we provide enough depth below that normal water level, and we'll be providing stabilization and restoration of the shore around the banks of the pond as we lower that normal water level. We'll also be removing the perimeter chain link fence around the pond. That generally allows geese to come in and settle in the pond and create some water quality and vegetation issues there as well. This is a schematic, an aerial photograph of James Court Pond. We see different treatment areas along the sides of the pond as we're going to be lowering the normal water level. In general, the green areas will be vegetated shoreline areas. The yellow that you see, the thin yellow lines, will be either concrete or riprap walls along the side of the pond to stabilize those banks. Doug Gotham is here as well. He can answer, certainly answer any detailed questions that we have about the treatments to that pond. Couple photographs of some sample shoreline stabilization projects that we've done in the past. You see here, both on the left and the right, focusing on vegetation down towards the shoreline, but we also see different areas where the ledge rock, concrete rock there is shown around inlets and outlets to the pond to provide additional stabilization there. The next phase of the project will be the Glendale Square Plaza. That shopping center, as Andy had shown, receives considerable flooding as well. There's some low areas, especially towards the south side of that parking lot as you get close to North Avenue. One of the first steps that the village worked very, very hard at was televising the storm sewer system all throughout the project area. We've identified some small points, repairs that'll need to be made with some storm sewer and utility conflicts, but we'll also be adding some new storm sewer in the shopping center parking lot, and also adding quite a bit of additional inlets to get that water into the system and move it south and downstream faster. That leads to the final phase of the project. We've worked on getting water out of James Court Pond and out of the shopping center, moving it south quicker, and now we need to store that water so we don't impact downstream properties. And there are several properties that the village owns south of Menards, which is, that area is generally the start of the creek, which is the tributary two to the east branch of the DuPage River. We'll be creating flood storage in approximately two to three different areas down there that are currently owned by the village, so there'll be no property acquisition needed. These are shown in yellow on that schematic, which you can see where the Menards is at up at the top. These will be just south of the Menards in that heavily forested area. We'll be creating flood storage that'll fill up during these large storm events. We'll be essentially passing that floodwater from James Court Pond through the shopping center and down to be held in these areas, which is much safer, obviously, than in the streets and in the homes. These areas will have native plantings as well, so that will continue to function as a natural area both during and after storm events. Some of the critical project components, not only was there a tremendous amount of work to date put in for the grant application and the engineering to date, but as we move forward, we'll continue with our engineering and our hydraulic analysis. We have to get permits through DuPage County, the Army Corps of Engineers, and there's a lot of wetlands, especially as we move into that south area of below Menards, so we have some critical wetlands that'll require some permitting. There is very complex hydraulics here. We've got storm sewers, we've got flood storage, and the area is all currently located in the regulatory flood plain and floodway. We also have coordination with IDOT and permitting with IDOT as we'll be connecting additional storm sewers into their system under North Avenue and be doing work in the right way there. And also talked about the James Court Pond, and there's some different options for aesthetics there as we look at the stream bank stabilization along the sides of that pond. Looking at the project schedule, and I'll hand it off to Andy here, what we've done up to date, we've got the hydraulic analysis completed. The residents may have seen our survey crews out in the past month or two. Additionally, there's geotechnical analysis and environmental testing as well that's been going on, and I'll turn it over to Andy now to talk about the design engineering.
Yeah, we're currently, we're accruing all of the information that's brought up to date. We're taking all of the hydraulic analysis results. We're bringing that into our design files. Our survey team has completed their topographic survey out there. The last two boards over there are actually our pre-final topographic survey over there, showing all of the areas that we've surveyed, the James Court Pond, the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza, and then all the way down the creek that goes from Menards all the way south, all the way down to Main Street. So you can take a look at that, and all that's going to just kind of play into our design, making sure that the hydraulics work and making sure that, you know, we can set our proper elevations on all of the storm sewers and the inlet structures to basically collect all this water and to get it into the storm sewer system and to get it to where it needs to be. So that's going to take some time. We're also got the soil borings. Our subconsultant Testing Service Corporation completed soil borings, both in the James Court Pond, to find out how much material needs to be dredged out of there, and also in the areas where we're going to be doing the excavations for the detention, the flood storage. So that way, we basically know what type of soils we're dealing with and how it can be hauled off and how it needs to be classified. So we're pulling all that information together here. We've begun our design engineering. We hope to go ahead and move forward with our design engineering over the course of the next month to two months, and we're anticipating that by maybe mid-January, that we'll be making our first submittals to DuPage County, as well as to the IDOT, as well as to the Army Corps, notifying them of the project. We've held some advanced coordination meetings with each of those agencies, notifying of the upcoming project, telling them that we are coming, try and get a kind of a jumpstart on, you know, and get it in their brain, try and tell them that, hey, this project's coming, you know, is there anything else that we can do in advance, and making our submittal to try and avoid delays and try and streamline it as quickly as possible. So, you know, after we, once we get all the permits and stuff like that, unfortunately, the permitting stage is kind of a lengthy period when you're dealing with the county, when you're dealing with the state, and you're dealing with the Army Corps. You know, we anticipate that that particular element, the permitting phase, will probably talk, you know, take anywhere from four to six months in order to get responses, go back and forth with a couple re-submittals in order to get final approval. We're hoping to go out to bid about September of next year, award the project, and then begin construction like about approximately the fall of next year. So God willing, with a good construction season, we'll be able to work through the fall, maybe even into the early spring of 2017, make sure all of our plantings establish themselves, and then we'll be able to close out that particular project. The good thing Darren alluded to is the fact that when we did submit to FEMA, the village was awarded back in September, I believe it was September of last year, they were awarded a total of $1,376,100. That particular cash flow covers reimbursable expenses for what was already put together for the application itself, for the permitting, as well as the construction and the construction observation. So the village is providing the additional 25% local share, and anything over and above what the village would want to incorporate into that particular project. So the 25% share, so they're getting, you know, 1.0, almost 1.4 million dollars in order to put towards that particular project, which is excellent. So the estimated total project cost as of right now, which was based on the $2,012, is $1,834,800. And that, Darren talked about how the project was kind of, that project dollar amount was kind of established based during our application process, based on the benefit cost ratio that we had to prove to FEMA, showing benefits to that particular area, you know, based on flood damages and, you know, trying, removing particular properties from flood plain, et cetera. So that's how, kind of how that dollar amount was established, and we maximized that dollar amount. We actually had a benefit cost ratio of one. We couldn't, you know, we couldn't go anymore, so.
Andy, I just wanted to make sure that we mentioned that the local share, the 25% was not, it was the tax increment financing, the TIF was able to pay for that portion of our contribution to that grant, which is great. So it didn't impact all the residents in Glendale Heights. It's actually TIF funds that were available in TIF number one by Menards that were able to use to cover the local share of the grant application, which certainly helped us in our obtaining approval.
Yeah, absolutely. That is absolutely correct. So the ultimate goal of the project, hydraulics, once those are in order, basically what we're going to try and show to the village is that we've reduced the peak flood elevation by up to 0.9 feet, about approximately 11 inches, for a 10-year event, and reduced the peak flood elevation by, for up to six inches, I'm sorry, up to seven inches, 0.6 feet, for a 100-year event. Darren, maybe you can talk just quickly, or confirm what I'm going to say here regarding a 10-year and 100-year event. Those are basically classifications of a rainfall, and while a little misleading to a lot of people that says 100-year event, that doesn't mean that you only get it once every 100 years. That means that based on historical information, that the likelihood of receiving that event is once every 100 years. And confirm that what the events were in 2008 and 2010?
Correct. And just to dovetail a little bit on what Andy's saying, 100-year event is technically, has a 1% chance of occurring in any given year. A 10-year event has a 10% chance in occurring in any given year. So it's all about percentages. You can certainly have 100-year storm events in back-to-back years, and in fact, here we saw the September 2008 event was nearly a 50-year event, and then very shortly thereafter in 2010, we got nearly an identical event. So global warming and climate change certainly is changing how this is skewed, but as Andy had indicated, this project will reduce the depth and the frequency of flooding in this area of the village, but it will not solve the flooding. And that's something that's key to note is that all the residents should certainly, in all areas, do everything they can to protect themselves from flooding.
That's really all we have. We'd like to open it up to any questions that the board may have. We'd be happy to answer anything else. Otherwise, we were going to open it up to just kind of stand by the exhibits in the back. If you wanted to come up and get a closer look and ask any questions, you're more than welcome to. We can answer anything we can. We do have a sign-in sheet, part of the FEMA grant itself, is basically is asked for public participation. All this is going to be televised, and we've all, we've sent out the letters to all of the public itself. We do want to just kind of document the fact that, you know, this was a public meeting, and we do have a sign-in sheet. So any residents that are in the audience, please, please sign in before you leave today. We would appreciate that, so.
Before I call on anybody for questions, I just want to do a special thank you to our engineers, our attorneys, our Public Works Department, for putting all this information together and filing for this grant, which technically the village of Glendale Heights is going to benefit. With the FEMA funds and the TIF money being used, we're getting almost a $2 million project that's not coming out of anybody's tax pockets, which is, in this day and age, that's wonderful. So thank you so much for your hard work and dedication for getting us to this point.
I think Public Works has put in a tremendous amount of time. You know, they're televising crews, their design and their engineers have gone through old record drawings of the Menards, of the Venture that was there before, you know, scouring through the archives, finding out, you know, how that storm sewer system is working, making sure that we got the exact sizes properly. You know, the televising guys are knee-deep in silt in the bottom of, you know, large diameter storm sewers, you know, near North Avenue. So, you know, we appreciate all that work and all that advanced coordination, so it's been very helpful to us, so.
Pat? Yes, so we're looking at three retention ponds?
We're trying to isolate that. Currently, we're looking at three particular areas. If we can streamline it based on the topography, all of our preliminary information, we were using a two-foot topography that was provided by DuPage County. So all the exact elevations were kind of, we were trying to, you know, make it work with the area, the information that we had without our full topographic survey. Now that we've got our full topographic survey, we can actually design down to like a hundredth of a foot, so we're a lot more accurate, and I think we're potentially looking at the possibility of streamlining it and being able to knock it down to two locations, so.
Okay, the one on, the one on James Court, you said you're going to dig it deeper. How deep are you going to dig that?
Basically, the, scroll back here. The information that we have right out there is that there's probably about, the pond's approximately four or five feet deep right now. It's showing basically kind of like a silted in area of approximately three or four feet below that as well, and that's just all information, all debris and sediment that's kind of come through the storm sewer system and kind of accumulated at the bottom of the pond for probably since the 60s and 70s when the area was developed. And so really what we're planning on doing is probably excavating probably about a foot or two, since we're going to be lowering the normal water elevation about a foot, we're going to be taking another foot off the bottom itself, so.
Making it wider or anything, or just deep?
The shape, for the most part, is not going to be changing. We're going to basically just kind of be armoring the sides, lowering the water elevation itself, and then scooping out the bottom.
Okay, and then you said you're going to put riprap. I mean, do you know how many inches? I mean, you know, it comes, that stone comes in two, three, five?
Right now, we haven't sized the riprap or we haven't sized the wall. We'll talk a lot with the Public Works kind of about, once we get some costs, about the different possibilities of, you know, how to armor those and kind of create a nice, something that's aesthetically pleasing. The reason why Doug's here is to basically answer any questions. You know, as the engineers, we're all about functionality. Doug's here to incorporate and make sure the functional things look good. So, you know, he's going to basically turn around and add that aesthetic element, you know, to our particular design, so that when you're looking at it, you know, it's a nice, it's an attractive place, that, you know, it's a place that kind of attracts, you know, people to, you know, walk by and look at it and, you know, and everything like that. So it's something to be proud of, so.
Okay, one more question. Are there water, are them sewer systems and IDOT, North Avenue going to take all that water?
And maybe Darren can talk a little bit about the hydraulics. Basically, I think if I can, in short, basically what we found is that there's not enough inlet capacity, there's not enough drainage structures with open grates to allow the water to get into the system in order to fill the storm sewer system beneath North Avenue. Basically, our analysis has basically provided that we're underutilizing the capacity of the storm sewer beneath North Avenue. So by adding all of these additional inlets, it's allowing it to get off the pavement into the storm sewer system and to utilize that full capacity of that storm sewer system that runs beneath North Avenue, south through the Menards parking lot, and then opens up into the creek channel.
So we're going to put the same size piping, connect it to North Avenue? Are we going to use the same type piping?
I think we would be putting in concrete piping is what we'd be planning on putting in, so. And I think we might be upsizing some of the, a few storm sewer systems just north of that complex, up north of that North Avenue connection.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
The impact on North Avenue, are you going to be just line boring underneath of it to put in the storm sewer? Is it going to?
What we're actually going to be doing is we're actually going to be tying into the existing storm sewer system which is beneath North Avenue. So we don't anticipate at this time doing any improvements beneath North Avenue. The storm sewer system, with the help of the televising tapes, we've also reached out to IDOT to, you know, to basically clean that section underneath North Avenue. We drafted a letter on the mayor's behalf, submitted that to them, along with the village's televising tapes of what they were able to accomplish underneath there. What we found is that the structural integrity and the condition of that pipe underneath there is actually, it's a fair condition. So we're not actually planning on doing any improvements beneath North Avenue. When we did meet with IDOT staff in one of our advanced coordination meetings, we did talk about making sure that our hydraulic analysis, when we present that to IDOT, we present for a highway permit, a highway and hydraulics permit, that we're actually showing that we're not going to be having any surface flooding. So none of the stormwater is going to surcharge out of those pipes onto the roadway and cause a hazardous condition to any drivers.
Thank you.
Chester?
I've got a couple of questions. First one, you're starting this in the fall of '16 and ending in February of '17. Why are you doing it in the winter months when we got that severe winters here? Why can't you do it in like in March, April, May?
Right now, a lot of the excavation can take place during the wintertime. You know, the ground will be hard, you know, as far as the clearing and stuff like that, so we can, we can begin and we can do some work over the wintertime. And obviously, once the grass and stuff establishes itself, we'd want to wait till like the springtime in order to make sure everything establishes it before we close the contract. We can certainly bump it back. What we're up against is basically a termination date of the grant that was provided by FEMA. FEMA has basically come to us, and the actual, originally the grant, they only gave us until December 31st of this year. Haven't gone through the design engineering phase. We asked, we requested an extension, and they were only able to provide extension until February of 2017 at this particular time. What we hope to do is if the permitting is able to take place a lot sooner, we might be able to, you know, fingers crossed, if we were able to get those permits quickly, we'd actually be able to construct the whole thing during the fall of next year. But in the event that it does need to get pushed out, we certainly have discussions with the village and discuss how that can take place if we wanted to push all of construction into '17.
Safe year cost goes over to your estimated, who's going to be responsible for that? The 25% for the village or what?
Right now, anything over and above, because we've maxed out our benefit cost ratio, we've basically maxed out what the federal agency will provide. I'm not sure whether they are open to any, it's unlikely, probably based on the fact that if we had to go back for additional costs... fact that if we had to go back for additional costs. We think we've got it pretty well covered, as far as where our application was permitted, basically what, you know, the scopes haven't changed that drastically from what we originally estimated for our cost, what it was. But I think to answer your question, I think anything over and above what the total project cost would be the responsibility of the village.
Correct. And there, just to add to that, we've had several internal meetings with Public Works and Finance and Administration to understand additional costs and how those would be incurred. Specifically related to some of the costs with the pond and the landscaping are not covered by the FEMA grants. So we're being very careful to monitor what types of landscaping we're doing out there to make it aesthetically pleasing, but also mindful that there's some things that are not covered by the FEMA grant. But we are having internal meetings about that.
One other thing, we have to close North Avenue, any closing?
I don't believe so. No permanent closures to North Avenue. We might request a lane closure, you know, depending on where the ultimate location of the storm sewers are installed at. There probably is gonna be definitely some impacts to the entrance of the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza while we're doing the construction itself. But a lot of that'll be coordinated during our permit with IDOT, but I don't anticipate anything more than like a daily lane closure between, you know, the hours of 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, so nothing permanent.
You can be working at night also, or just in the daytime?
Not at this time, you know, I think it's just gonna be daytime construction.
Okay, one other, last question. Will the residents in James Court, will they require flood insurance?
I think the way the maps are all currently shown is that most of them are impacted by the flood plain or the floodway up there in that particular area. Without having the map in front of me, most of those properties have flooded in the past, and a lot of that's based on the mortgages that each of the individual property owners have themselves, on whether flood insurance is required in order to basically to mortgage that particular home itself, based on the repeat history of flooding in the particular area. I think it would probably be our recommendation at this time that most of those residents do, you know, based on your history itself, that you do have flood insurance.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I already do. And now with the county maps, we are seeing that they're including them in, they're continuing to include them in the flood insurance. Yes.
Is there anyone in the public that wish... Oh, I'm sorry. Bill?
Okay. You indicate that flooding will be reduced, but not eliminated. You have a estimate as to how much of a reduction we can expect to see from this project?
Based on the elevation, I think there was an approximate depth that we had kind of calculated of 11 inches and seven inches based on a particular event, you know, in that particular area, based on those particular storm events. When we did our initial hydraulic report, we put together seven alternatives for the village. When we discussed with the village, those alternatives ranged from like a quarter-million-dollar project all the way up to like $20 million, which was the fix-all. And based on the benefit-cost ratio that we could prove to FEMA, you know, we kind of worked with the village and selected alternative four, which basically kind of encompasses the scope that we've talked about tonight. But ultimately, I think this is the benefits that we would hope to receive is, you know, the 11 inches to nine inches, you know, based on the particular storm events. And that's basically, if, you know, say if you're, you had a commercial building and it was 11 inches high coming in like your front doorstep, we would hope to, you know, drop that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Nobody else on the board?
Oh, I knew it! I have to say it. So if we're looking at a 10-inch flood, we're gonna reduce that only by two inches?
I don't know, relying the hydraulics expert to answer that one.
So going back to the different flood events here, and I'll use the one up at the top, the 10-year return interval storm event, so a storm event that has a 10% chance in occurring in any given year. If you were, if you were in a home and you...
The flood, you flooded up to here, that would be dropped 10 inches.
So for many of the homes, if they had six inches of water in the home, they would have no water in the home because that flood elevation has dropped below the low entry of that home.
All right, but if I'm a homeowner and my basement flooded, and I get a foot of water, and now I'm only getting nine, I might as well get a foot.
Well, it wouldn't go from a foot down to nine, it would go from a foot down to, depending on the, to one or five.
I mean, flooding is flooding, no matter if you got 20 inches or five inches. You know what I'm saying?
And with this project, as Andy had indicated, we maximize the amount of benefits that we get from this project, given the cost of this, of the project. And so we feel that there will be a tremendous amount of benefits to the residents here, given the significant, we're talking almost a foot of flood depth reduction throughout this part of the village.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add that we also have to be mindful of the liability of announcing to the residents that we would completely eliminate any flooding, because with that low of an area, that's just not possible, unless you spend $20 million. So what we've done in any communication is we've been very careful to explain to the businesses and the residents of what this project entails, and that we will be reducing the normal flooding that happens, you know, in the regular rains, but certainly in those heavy, heavy 100-year ones, that's where you're still going to see flooding. So you're reducing the normal stuff, though, which is, which is what we, what, we've been very careful to communicate that clearly to the residents and the businesses.
That's exactly it. Perfect, well said.
Bill?
One more question. You say you're adding additional grates along North Avenue to increase the flow into the... Is that gonna be on the IDOT right of way? In the shopping center? And if it's in the shopping center, who's gonna be responsible for making sure that debris and those are kept clean?
Currently, the village has a stormwater utility easement to maintain the storm sewer system that goes through that complex itself. You know, with those lines located, we hope to be able to, kind of, if we can, install those grates within the easements themselves. We do have planned to meet with the Glendale Square, Glendale Plaza Shopping Square owner to discuss the possibility that easements may be required from them in order to install that, install additional grades that might be outside of the additional, or the existing easements. But I believe, based on our preliminary analysis, that most of those grates will probably be actually outside of the North Avenue right of way, right near that entrance of the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza.
I guess there's no more questions from up here. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to ask any questions in this public hearing regarding... Would you please step up to the podium so it can be on the tape? And could you give your name and address, please?
My name is Michael Tirana, 22W550, second place. You're taking the water on the north side of North Avenue, on the pipes underneath North Avenue, and then it's gonna go into the creek? And when it gets to the creek, what's gonna happen to it then? It'll be absorbed?
No, it'll be stored.
It'll be stored in a creek?
Correct. And what storage basin is what we're constructing?
A basin is a what?
A big pond, big bathtub there that'll be...
But it's already a wetland.
That's correct, we're expanding that one.
And you're gonna put more water in the wetland? Will it, how quickly does it get absorbed?
We're not...
We're not counting on it being absorbed, we're counting on storing it...
Storing.
...and then releasing it slowly.
Okay. And when releases, it goes downstream to where?
That goes under Main Street, Glen Ellen Road, and then heads towards the east to the east branch of the DuPage River.
Around Churchill Woods?
That's correct.
Okay. And will it affect wells or septic systems that are adjacent to the wetland?
Nope, we're not anticipating any additional groundwater to be flowing into there.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up and comment or ask a question? Thank you very much. A motion to close the public hearing would be in order. Trustee Vande...
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our public hearing is closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll be happy when this whole project's over.
Just a reminder, and a thank you for anybody who came. Please sign in, that is an important part of our grant application, so please sign the sign-in sheet up in.
Correct. Thank you.